It's determined that there's probable cause for a bond of good behavior issue. The court will allow both the applicant and the accused to present evidence, call witnesses, offer explanations for conduct or events, and propose any resolution that could resolve this conflict, including but not limited to the bond of good behavior. Let me advise both parties of certain constitutional rights. The accused must be aware that the applicant is seeking an order that would limit contact between the parties. Neither the applicant nor the accused can be compelled to testify. Both have the right to remain silent. Everyone who testifies will be placed under oath, and once they testify, will be subject to cross-examination. Does anybody have any questions? Does applicant wish to proceed? Okay.
Judge, one preliminary matter, if I could, and I don't know what your practice is, uh, you seem awfully close to be standing, but I'm happy to, uh, do whatever your honor uh instructs in that respect. Would you like me to stand when I address the court?
I'm, I'm good either way.
Okay, alright.
Make yourself comfortable.
Thank you, Judge. I understand that Mr. Roundtree, uh, is representing the applicant today, and we would object to Mr. Roundtree's appearance. Uh, the, uh, as the court noted, this is a, uh, quasi, at least a quasi criminal, uh, proceeding, and as such, a private member of the bar cannot act as a, uh, district attorney or an assistant district attorney, or present evidence or argument, uh, for the arrest of a, uh, a citizen of the, uh, state of Georgia. And so we would object to his participation.
Your Honor, uh, disagree with that. Uh, I'm a private attorney, uh, licensed in Georgia. I represent this gentleman. He's entitled to counsel. I'm not seeking to have anybody arrested. We're seeking a good behavior bond, uh, and, uh, we ask to proceed.
I'm going to allow it. May be subject to appeal, but that will be in your discretion. Okay?
Understood. Uh, Judge, the second preliminary matter would be, uh, to invoke the rule. Uh, I don't know whether, uh, counsel has, uh, other witnesses present, but to the extent he does, I would request for the rule of sequestration.
Do you have any witnesses coming?
To do that, we have two witnesses, Your Honor, and there'll be five of those who will give you this question.
Okay, who are they?
That would be Roy Thompson and Toby Connor.
Mr. Wood, does Sack have any witnesses?
Uh, we have one, Ms. Neville, uh, if you could step out as well, please, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Roundtree, all right. Would you like a witness to take a stand, Your Honor?
Please, Your Honor.
Mr. Rushing, would you please identify yourself to the court?
Yes, sir. My name is Tanner Rush.
Uh, where do you live, Mr. Rushing?
Nashville, Georgia.
And, uh, what do you do for a living?
I, I'm in the tree business, the metal business.
Alright. Are you also on the county commission of Bull County?
Yes, sir.
How, how long have you been on that?
Uh, since two thousand and eighteen.
And how often does that county commission meet?
Twice a month unless we have some kind of special, but, but, or twice a month, one morning meet, one evening.
And you're typically able to meet?
Yes, sir. I got missed one.
Are you aware of Mr. Lawton Sack? Do you, do you know Mr. Sack?
I do.
How long have you known him?
Probably met him when I was signing up for election, probably, I don't know, never how long that's been, since eighteen, I guess. I think he was maybe secretary or something of the Republican Party. I can't remember, not a special date, somewhere along there.
Alright, and you ran as a Republican?
Yes, sir.
Did you have any, uh, disagreement with Miss Sack at that time?
No, sir, never had to.
Alright, alright. Well, we're here over an incident that occurred at a county commission meeting.
Yes, sir.
I guess it's what, the culminating thing, and, uh, that meeting, I believe, was...
February the sixth.
February the sixth, two thousand twenty-four.
Yes. Evening meeting.
Afternoon meeting? And you were there at that meeting?
Yes.
And was Miss Sack at the meeting?
Yes.
Alright. Tell us generally, if you would, the court, I, I assume you've probably not been to a Bull County Commission meeting, how, how do those, tell us roughly how those meetings go about, sort of a general, not a specific agenda of this meeting, but the format.
Well, we, we usually all give a general what's going to take place at what meeting, at, at meeting, and some of it be consent agenda, some of it be, uh, different stuff as far as if we have to do an executive session, I don't think there's about three things we can go on, and that's potential litigation, uh, property or employee stuff.
Alright, and so does the public appear at each meeting?
Yes, sir. I'll accept for this, uh, uh, executive session.
Alright, well, tell us a little bit first about what is an executive session?
Executive session is when the county commissioners and, and attorney and all get together to handle stuff like county, county business, whether it's land acquisition or employee stuff, whether it's employees in trouble or something needs taking place.
And those are items that the, uh, the law allows the commission to meet in private outside of the public view, is that right?
Yes, it has to be listed on the agenda and it has to state what reasons we meet.
Alright, and so when an executive session is called, what typically happens?
Uh, the, the meeting will go on, and then you'll get to, and go through the consent agenda, new business, then you'll get to, uh, public comment, and then after public comment, you'll have staff comment, and employee and staff comment, and committee comments, and then the chairman reads, uh, statute of Georgia law stating that we fix the entry into executive session and what, what it's about.
Alright. Now, let's go back to the February sixth meeting. To the best of your recollection, was there an unusually large or small crowd there that night?
No, sir. It was probably one of the more common meetings we've had in the last year. It was, uh, didn't have a whole lot on it, had some things on the consent agenda, but, uh, nothing, nothing that ordinary.
And I think you said earlier that Mr. Sack was at that meeting?
Yes, sir, he was.
Did you, did you notice where he was sitting?
Yes, sir. He was sitting directly in front of me to the outside, or about four seats, four rows back from the audience, the participants in it.
So he was in, in with the audience?
Yes, sir.
Now, you mentioned that in the format of a meeting, there's a time for public comments.
Yes, sir.
Uh, did that happen at that, at that meeting?
Yes, sir, it did.
Uh, were there any public comments?
Yes, if one lady signed up, she signed up to speak for something to do with High Tower Road, wanted to know how it's coming along with the pavement on High Tower Road that she got, when the county attorney, they handled that. The next person that had signed up was Cassandra Michael. Cassandra Michael declined to comment, and therefore that was, that was the end of the public comment.
Alright, did Mr. Sack sign up for a public comment?
No, sir. Not my, my.
Did he offer any public comment?
No, sir.
Was that executive session called as part of that meeting?
Yes, sir. We had employee and staff comments, and then we had committee comments. I don't believe there was any committee to comment, and I can't, cannot remember. Uh, after that, Chairman, Mr. Roy Thompson, he read the statute from Georgia stating that he has had, something he has to read before we go into executive session, and he said, when we are in executive session, everybody, I think the same media is here today, was there that day, and everybody in the audience got up and left, and we're in the hall.
Alright, is that what typically happens, they go out in the hall and the doors are closed?
Yeah, that's what happened, except for the only people that I know was left, or didn't know, there was one left, but they were hung out to sea.
Who was that one?
One person was Alicia Neville. She had called that morning, wanted to know about, I mean, back up to the consent agenda, I moved an out from the consent agenda, uh, a nomination for Patrick Woo to be nominated to go on the Code for Development Authority by Mr. Brian Burke.
Did you know Patrick Woo?
Don't know either one of them.
Alright.
But anyway, she called that morning to me, and I was in Mr. Thompson's office and wanted to know she was concerned about that appointment, of what it consisted, of what it consisted of. I told her I'd found out, so I received a letter from Brian Burke and presented it under, when it comes to commissioners, well, I moved from the consent agenda to new business. When it come on to new business, I said, well, I had a lady, she didn't give me permission to use her name at that time, so I did not use it. I said, I got a lady in the audience that wanted to know she was concerned about this position. I'll just read you the letter. So I read the letter exactly like Brian Burke had written the letter to us, to explain who Mr. Woo was, what the, what the, uh, appointment consisted of, and it was an appointment, it was a Code for Development Authority, it consisted of several counties, so it's not necessarily that he got nominated, he was still going to have to go, my understanding, through the other counties got to appoint somebody too.
And so the letter you had was from Brian Burke that recommended the nomination of Mr. Woo?
That's right.
And so what did you do after reading that letter?
After reading the letter, there was, didn't, no other committee had any questions. Mr. Brian Burke had had the position for thirty years, he recommended Mr. Woo. I knew he, I, I do not know either one of them personally. He had this position for thirty years, he recommended him for the nomination, said that he had, had worked with him and, and give his resume where he was from. I did not give his resume, I did not know the man to give. So I made, I made a decision that we accept him as a nomination, exactly by, I can't remember who, past United States Department of Commerce.
Alright. And that was the end of that discussion on Mr. Woo in official business?
The, the end of that, uh, no more committee comments. Mr. Roy read the state of Georgia, and we went into executive session, everybody got in that room.
Alright, now, everybody out here that you testified, Ms. Neville?
Ms. Neville had the point, the only one I seen. She come up, walked up, said, appreciate you explaining that, I said, well, I just done what, and so...
So she walked up to the front?
To, to the front. We, we actually sitting up like, like the judge, but higher, we sitting up pretty high up, and there's a, I sit on that end, there's a long, it's about fifteen or sixteen foot long, with a knee ball, it's about four foot high, it goes out, kind of down where the deck would stand it out of there.
I'm going to show you a document that the law plans to exhibit to you.
That's right.
Does that help in this explanation?
Yes, sir.
Would you have, would you have this?
He did show it to me.
You can have a copy, please.
No objection, Judge.
So what does that indicate?
Everybody out there, just y'all.
Uh, just writing, what, what does he did at one show?
Oh, that's the, that's the ramp that I'm talking about. To the left-hand side, you see a chair on the left, that's the county attorney, and right beside him, a set of county, uh, accountant, Christie. And then the first chair you see up there, when you turn to the left around the end of that dice, is my chair, that is my chair, and the next one is Toby Connor's chair, another one.
Alright, I'm going to show you now, document of Mark that explains exhibit two.
That's right.
Alright, does that, what chair does that show?
That is my chair.
So that's the chair that you sit in, in the, in a county commission meeting?
That's, that's exactly right.
And was that the chair you were in on the night of January sixth?
February sixth, yeah.
I'm sorry, February sixth? Alright, now, where was Ms. Neville standing?
Ms. Neville was standing directly to the, the left of my chair, down on the floor. You actually cannot, you can't see exactly where she was standing at. She's standing to the left-hand side of that computer monitor, kind of directly in front, not directly in front of Toby Connor, but Commissioner Connor, but more on his side than that.
Alright, now, who sits in that next chair to your right?
Commissioner Toby Connor.
That's his normal seat, out of, out of regular?
Yes, sir. That's where he's been since he's been elected.
Alright, and, and Ms. Neville, I think your testimony would have been standing out in front of the bench or dice, uh, in, in, sort of between you and Mr. Connor?
That's right. Her head was just a bit over the, just a bit over the, kind of over the wall over there.
And I believe both of these photographs exhibit number one and two fairly depict, uh, the area that we've been discussing.
That's right.
Your Honor, I'll offer both exhibit one and exhibit two in the evidence this time.
No objection.
Alright, so you, your attention while Mrs. Neville was talking was supposed to square?
When she first come up to me, it was on her, but then when her and Commissioner Connor got, I didn't talk about something, Mr. Roy, which sits in the middle of the dice, which is, uh, two more seats past that, so my attention is toward him, so Lisa's down there, I'm turned like this looking toward...
You have a swivel chair, like the one you're in now?
Yes, sir, but the main, but this one right here.
Alright.
But it's a little trouble.
And what is Mr. Thompson doing down there while you're looking at him?
He's discussing the, the executive session, getting his papers in order, I'm getting my papers in order, coming to Alicia. Commissioner Connor and Alicia are talking about whatever they talking about, not really paying any attention to what they talking about, seeing to do with me and how to do with that.
But what is the next thing that gets your attention?
The next thing that gets to my attention is, uh, most of the time, either Jeff, Agent the County Attorney, or Cindy, the, the county accountant would hand me something over walls right here, would hand me something over that way, and the ramp comes up behind, behind me, and so I'm turned like this, well, I feel something on my arm, but I'm turning around thinking it's going to be them, it's there to be right here, in that corner.
In front of you.
That's right, but it's not.
What is it?
It's a man standing right there.
Alright, could you indicate to the court on plain exhibit number two, where he's standing?
Right, oh, this, this.
That's, that's right.
Right at the end of that wall right there, with his, I guess, his pants buttoned, he probably hit him probably about the belt, that wall hit him probably about his belt right there on that corner.
Alright, and so what was his posture when you turned around and saw him standing there against that wall?
Leaned over, leaned over. I'm leaning back here in my chair, I, I turn around, he just leaned over, right here. As far, as far as he can lean over, I got my papers in front of me like this with the computer monitor right there. I turn around, and he's standing. On a map tied out of steam, my, it probably wouldn't have been as big of a shot, but I did see, he's, I mean, I'm focused over here.
So his head, if you draw, drew a vertical line, dropped a plum bar from his nose, uh, where would it, would it have hit, in somewhere inside your chair?
Over there. He's right here. I'm leaning back too, he's, I mean, he's, he's over me.
Alright, so what happened next?
Well, I'm kind of shocked and awed, but not hell out of steam, it wouldn't have been so, you know, startling is what it does, and I'm trying to make out what he's saying, he's saying something. Of course, there's other things going on too, I just, just turned around, thinking I was going to see somebody here, and there's somebody here, and it's hard for me to make out what he's saying, but he's right there and he's talking, but I can't make out what he's saying. So finally, after, I ain't going to say how long it was, because I don't know how long it was, I finally made out that he said something to the, I had, you know, he had worked at Georgia Southern for four months. Okay, I, I don't know what you're talking about. I mean, when you said he worked at Georgia Southern, I still don't know who he's talking about. I have no idea, I don't know what Mr. Woo's done, I have, don't, I don't even know if Brian Burke, Patrick Woo, or even exist, I mean, I'm just going by what I've been offered. And the explanation, Alicia Neville, that's as far as I went. After that, I don't know what's going on with him and Patrick Woo, I have no idea.
And he, did he tell you he was talking about Patrick Woo?
Yeah, I had, I had a letter, I, I had a letter, and finally, he said, well, you said he worked at Georgia Southern. I said, I ain't said he worked at Georgia Southern, I don't even know Patrick Woo. He said, you did say. I said, where? He said, right there in that letter, and he put his finger, well, he was, so far he could put his finger on, on my paper.
You were holding the letter in your hand?
He said, right there, and he said where he worked at, I don't tell him, he knows it way better than I do, because he said somebody worked at some, I don't even know what he said, but he, he closed it. And I said, I didn't say a thing, all I done was read the letter. I mean, I, I mean, I can't tell you where this man works, I don't, I ain't got a clue. Now, somebody else asked why, I don't know why he's back here chastising me about Patrick Woo, I have no idea.
Had prior to this incident, had, had Mr. Sack ever confronted you about Mr. Woo before?
Has he?
Mr. Sack, had he ever said anything to you about Mr. Woo?
As far as I know, yeah, I don't know, he hasn't ever said anything to me about Patrick Woo.
Alright, now, during this conversation that you just relayed to us, are you still sitting in your chair?
Oh, yeah, sitting right there.
You're still leaning back, looking up?
Sitting right there, but I'm not looking up.
And he's still over you?
Still up.
Alright, now, has anything happened in the past several months, uh, Mr. Rushing, that would cause you or other county commissioners, uh, to have a heightened level of, uh, concern with your safety?
Oh, yeah, we've been told that we need to buy some bulletproof vest, and one fellow said he had a gun, he hadn't brought it yet, turned around and said that to the deputies, uh, you know, yeah, that's, that's several things, there's several things.
Judge, I hate to interrupt, but I don't know how that could possibly affect Mr. Lawton and the court's consideration for, uh, Mr. Lawton Sack.
Your Honor, it's very important, because it goes to the state of mind of Mr. Rushing, uh, and what Mr. Sack was doing, uh, and how Mr. Rushing interpreted that, and, and why he had reason to fear of his safety, and the reason is there has been, uh, what may be considered overt threats, not by Mr. Sack, but by others, because of his position as a county commissioner, uh, and here is Mr. Sack, in behavior described, therefore that is relevant.
Yeah, uh, Judge, he just made the argument that puts the doom to his contention, and that is, didn't come from Mr. Sack. If it had come from Mr. Sack, if Mr. Lawton Sack had done something to cause him concern, to put him in reasonable fear, that's admissible. This general specter of, you know, some kind of violence somewhere sometime, not admissible with respect to Mr. Sack.
Alright, when you were telling the, um, the, the events that occurred, uh, we, we left it, uh, with, uh, Mr. Sack pointing out on the piece of paper, Mr. Woo, uh, and he was in a position for, over you, uh, you were down underneath him. Alright, tell, tell the court what happened after that?
Chairman Thompson walked up, behind me, and was telling Mr. Sack, you got to leave when executive session. At this time, Ms. Neville is gone, she's, she's going to arrest everybody, I guess, or on the way out, my mind full of things, it's right here where I'm sitting at, because at this point in time, I'm still asleep, and he's not going anywhere, he's, he continues to just hold his position right where he's at, and so yes, after that, when Mr. Roy told him, said, you got to go, he don't move, and Mr. Roy goes back and starts calling for the deputies, and trying to get him to move off, so when he does, then I stand up, I mean, any, I think any, any man would stand up, I mean, I'm not going, I'm not going to take a sitting down, and so I stood up, and to the effect, I told him, I said, look, I'm not going to be a county commissioner for now, meaning, now, I understand, he might have took that for a threat, meaning, if you don't like the decisions I make, that's fair, somebody will make some judgments for you, but I, I don't, I don't know what's going on, and so we get into heated discussion, and I said, don't, I told him, don't touch me no more, don't talk to me no more, don't text me, don't bother me, because I can see where this is going, because anybody knows, as simple a place as Agro Supply, you don't walk in there and go behind the counter, ain't no way nobody in this room walking in behind this with this judge up there, no, no way, and you got to go fifteen or sixteen feet, so it's not, and can't nobody say they didn't know we was in executive session, because every bit, the, the media's sitting out there, and I'm looking at them, they had gone in the hall, everybody that had, was done in the hall, they knew, I, I mean, this, this, this is facts, and so finally, he just sat, I mean, standing right there, I ain't going to stand up by this judge, but I mean, we should stand enough, I ain't told him, but I'm close enough to, you know, there's a wall between us like this, I mean, I, I can't step forward through it, I mean, I can't step forward, but he just stands there, won't go, and I did, I thought, I said, boy, you don't, I mean, you don't understand, I told you to leave me alone, nor do I need to explain, you're in a different way than where you understand. Well, he still stood there for a minute, with Mr. Roy, the chairman hollering, and everybody else hollering, and so finally, he turns around and walks off. He goes out, out the door, as far as I'm concerned, somewhere, that's the end of it. I mean, what it was is what it was. Well, you want to ask me some more questions, will we continue on?
Was that the end of it?
It was the end of it to that point, but then directly past that, then I go to get word back, that, well, he's out in the hall saying that you threatened him. I didn't threaten that man, I didn't pick my hands up, I didn't point at him, and of course, I know it's no go, you bothered your fist up, but I, I didn't, but you can ask the other people that was in the room, I mean, I, I mean, I didn't even harm any of my hands, as far as I know, never left the counter. I was standing there with my hands, just like I always do, and you know, back there playing with it, I didn't shake my fist like he said, and his, and all that, I did, no, I ain't that kind of, I do that, but, 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 you can ask the other fellows that were there, Alicia, you can ask them.
Alright, so what, you filed this petition for a, a, a good behavior bond, uh, what is it you want the court to do?
Well, can I explain why I filed it first?
Hmm, okay.
Well, like I said, as far as I'm concerned, it's over with. I go back to county commission office the next morning, and I hear that he went by two deputies, sworn deputies, that's there to protect that room, don't bother them, goes on and calls the sheriff at the house directly, the sheriff, and, and wants the investigation done, because Commissioner Rushing just threatened him, so my understanding, I don't know what I'm told is to that.
Object to this conjecture and speculation, Judge.
This is mostly hearsay. That's right. We, we don't...
Let me see what a report I got, go ahead.
That's, that's right, so you don't, you weren't present when he made whatever he did at the chair, if you don't know about that, but there was a, a sheriff's investigation report filed?
Yes.
Did you receive a copy of that?
Yes.
And you identified, when you did, number three?
And I just came in the hallway saying that I threatened him, yes, yes.
Is that the, the sheriff's investigation report that you received?
Yes.
And so how did you interpret that?
I interpreted that, that I hadn't made any threats, and that, uh, if, if anything, then I was, I was, I was, I would be the victim if anything was, if anything was said.
Alright, and so does that, does that play into any reason that you filed this petition for a good behavior bond?
Yes, because they relentlessly wanted the sheriff to do something to me, and I hadn't done anything, and so I said, well, I seek counsel, counsel says the best thing we can do is the least evasive thing, is just file a good behavior warrant, and he can't get around you, you can't get around him, ain't no way that y'all, get y'all stories crossed anymore, I say, that's fine, nobody's in, no harm, no foul, ain't going to hurt nobody, fine, if that's what, if that's what it takes to set it, put me where I'm supposed to be and him where he's supposed to be, then that's that.
And that's what you're asking for today?
That's right, because, and the reason I'm asking for that is because, uh, anybody that's here, including him, I was sitting exactly where I was, now, I ain't all my life, but at this point in time, I was sitting exactly where I was appointed to sit, in the exact seat I was assigned to sit at, in the exact position I was supposed to be in, in an executive session. Now, if they can make me wrong out of that, uh, I guess we have no, we have no chances.
Objection to this speech, has nothing to do with this case, Judge.
That's all the questions I have with this witness, you may have him on cross counsel if you like.
Approach the witness, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sir, um, earlier this month, you went to this court, and you swore out a, uh, good behavior warrant with respect of Mr. Lawton, didn't you?
No, sir, I didn't. Mr. Roundtree did.
Oh, he did? Who, who was the one who signed it?
I said, I guess, I didn't see him.
Right.
No, no, now, this is, yes, yes, I signed this, but I didn't sign this.
Okay, this is a statement?
Yes.
That forms the basis for the application for this good behavior proceeding, you understand that?
I understand what you're saying, although I say it's not being a attorney, that's your job, yes, I understand.
Yeah, um, and, so this was prepared by, uh, Mr. Roundtree, this statement here?
No, sir, this was prepared by me.
Okay, good, I thought you said it was prepared by Mr. Roundtree.
No, you asked me to defile this, but I didn't, I have this prepared for you.
Okay, um, take a second, are you familiar with this? Have you read this, uh, statement in preparation for today's hearing?
No, I didn't read it today, but I have written it.
You're familiar with the contents of that statement?
As far as I know, yes.
It says nothing about Mr. Lawton Sack reaching out and grabbing you, does it?
I don't know that, really, I don't.
Well, you said you're familiar with it, does it say?
Let's let him have time to read it, please, sir.
I thought he was saying he's familiar with it. Do you need a second?
No, that's fine, I actually thought someone touched me on the arm, but I mean, I mean, now, you trying to make like he snatched me out of the chair, no, he reached out and touched me.
Okay, this statement doesn't say anything about him grabbing you by the arm, does it?
But he touched me on the arm.
This statement, this simple question, doesn't say anything about...
Grab, no, it don't say grab.
No, let me, let me finish, don't want to be arguing it here, I'll let you finish, but you've got to let me finish, is that fair? That statement doesn't say anything about Mr. Lawton Sack grabbing you, does it?
Putting his hand on my arm, it does not say grab.
All right, and it doesn't say anything about him reaching over and touching or grabbing or pointing out on your papers, does it?
No, sir, it don't say every word that was said, even.
Well...
These are, these are the steps he took to get it, he...
Uh-huh, yeah, I move to strike that, Your Honor, is, uh, flippant, sarcastic, and unresponsive.
Let's let's carry on.
All right, you understand this is an important proceeding, right?
Understand what?
This is an important proceeding, right?
Yes, I understand, I understand very well.
You understood when you made this application, when you filled out this form here, that that was an important proceeding, correct?
I did.
You didn't undertake that lightly, did you?
No.
And I think you said earlier that one of the things that played into your taking up this, uh, good behavior bond, was you had found out that Mr. Lawton Sack had made a report about you to the police, right?
Hearsay, I didn't see it, but it was hearsay.
You said that's what put you over in terms of making this complaint here regarding this magistrate's court proceeding, that was it, right, that one thing?
If that, because they were pursuing me.
Ah, that's what you call retaliation, isn't it?
No, that's...
A citizen's got a right, I mean, in a way, citizens got a right to go to the police when they think they've been wronged, don't they?
They did.
Citizen's got a right to go to his commissioner when he thinks that the commissioner has stated something inaccurately true.
Not executive session.
Yeah, we're not talking about executive session, are we, sir?
That's what happened.
All right, um, Judge, we've got a comp, an excerpt of, uh, the recording, and I'd ask that we, uh, be allowed to play this at this point in time. You've listened to this, I trust?
Your Honor, we need to authenticate this recording, I don't know if it's been, you know, anybody has enhanced it, or done anything to it, where'd it come from, we can't just play recordings without, uh, without the proper foundation.
One, the rules of evidence with respect to foundations and otherwise don't apply to this, uh, proceeding, and he can identify the speakers in in the, uh, recording.
I haven't heard enough, if I can identify, well, no.
All right, how long does this take?
It's a minute and twenty-four seconds, I think.
We'll take a minute and twenty-four second recess and let y'all look at it.
Uh, it's a, it's an audio, Judge.
Or let let you listen to it.
Okay, um, should we do that back there?
You can do it in here, and I'll step outside.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, we're on, Your Honor, uh, we we, we need to step outside, we're on, whatever we're on here.
That'll give you a question.
All right.
Okay, yeah.
Me?
I, uh, I think the judge intends for parts, so I would suggest we all step on out.